I'd like to call this meeting to order if you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Members present this evening are council members Kamara Sulek, CEO Delorco, Gearbaugh, Rice will be absent, Mayor Pro Tem Dillon is expected to be late, and Mayor Marl is present as well. From city staff, we have City Manager Otul, Clerk Royal, Community Development Director Harrington, and DPW Director Searls. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, noting that new business item 23-186, per the city manager's request, will be removed from tonight's agenda, limiting the new business portion of tonight's meeting to just three items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an additional thing under discussion, just some information about the cemetery.
Okay, so that'll be after reports and announcements, a cemetery update. Would you like to move to approve the agenda then as amended, Mr. CEO, noting that one additional discussion item and striking of agenda item 23-186?
It'd be my pleasure to do that.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Again, I do, I can confirm that Councilmember Rice will be absent this evening. I don't know about Mayor Pro Tem Dillon. I think she might just be running late. So let's entertain a motion at this time simply to excuse the absence of Councilmember Rice.
I'll move.
Moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by CEO. All those in favor of excusing the absence of Councilmember Rice, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion passes. We come now to public comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person, excuse me, may come forward at this time, make common or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items this evening? Clerk Royal, did we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting?
Yes, sir.
Easy enough. Then we proceed to the one presentation of the night, which is Main Street Strategic Plan. And we would welcome the Executive Director of Main Street, Mary, to the podium.
Hello, good evening. For the record again, my name is Mary Detling, and I'm the Executive Director of Celine Main Street. I'm here tonight to go over the strategic plan that Celine Main Street has created in partnership with MEDC and Place and Main Consultant Joe Borgstrom. Every year, as part of their support to local Main Street organizations, MEDC sponsors us with the opportunity for a free service. And for 2023, we chose a strategic plan consultation. So this was paid for by the MEDC. And can you see me? There we go. So why do we do a strategic plan? To provide direction, to communicate who we are, including revisiting our vision, mission, and goals, and declare what we want to accomplish in the next five years. With the changeover from Holly to myself, we thought it was perfect time to revisit these things right now, or this year. So the strategic plan process, our strategic plan was professionally facilitated by Joe Borgstrom of Place and Main. Included data from recent surveys done by MEDC in downtown Celine in the fall of 2022. We invited city leaders, volunteers, and community members to focus group meetings. We held a board workshop where we did a SWOT analysis, and came up with many ideas on how to meet what our community deemed priorities. And then our facilitator organized all of this information into six goals for Celine Main Street, along with action steps to reach these goals. I felt like now was a perfect time to present these goals to the city council as it overlaps and validates a lot of the feedback the city has been receiving as part of the process of developing its master plan. So during our board workshop, we tweaked our vision statement to reflect what we want downtown Celine to look like in 2028. It reads, "By 2028, downtown Celine will be a social and commercial hub for entertainment, shopping, dining, innovation, and the arts. We will be a destination for sidewalk strolls and sightseeing made lively with vibrant storefronts and streetscapes flanked by classic historic architecture. People will find downtown Celine to be the ideal meeting place for friends, families, and community celebrations throughout the year. Locals will take pride in our downtown, supporting its growth and preservation with a dedicated network of volunteers and partnerships. Historic character and friendliness will make this a diverse Main Street community and an attractive place for enterprise and investment, as well as a wonderful place to call home." Okay. We also updated our mission statement, which now reads, "Celine Main Street is a 501(c)(3) community-driven nonprofit dedicated to guiding our downtown towards its most vibrant future. We operate as a cultural and commercial hub for entrepreneurship, innovation, entertainment, and the arts. Downtown Celine aims to be an inclusive place where everyone feels welcome. Authenticity and friendliness make downtown Celine an extraordinary location for work, small business enterprise, human-scale investment, and a wonderful place to visit, work, or call home." So the six main goals, as shown here, were broken down into action steps, which I'm going to go over kind of in total. So, next screen, please. Goal number one: communicate who Celine Main Street is and what we do. Celine Main Street is more than an organization that puts on events, and we need to keep reminding everyone, including our own volunteers and board members, sometimes of this. As new people move into Celine, as people disconnect and then reengage with downtown, as life shifts, we need to take charge of how we are perceived. To do that, we have created the following action steps. Number one: create a Y Celine recruitment document. Now, the community recruitment and retention team has been working on this with city interns over the past few months, and we are partnering with Ben to refine that packet and promote it. To further streamline the promotion of downtown Celine and what Main Street does for our community, we'll be creating an updated communications plan and an updated fundraising plan and a social media content calendar. Next screen. Goal number two is to attract talent and entrepreneurs to help fill downtown vacancies and storefronts. Again, step one is finishing the Celine recruitment packet. Beyond that, we will need to get the Economic Vitality Committee up and working at full steam to create a plan for our role in economic development and business recruitment, as well as evaluate all of our activities and events through the lens of economic development. Next screen. Goal number three: help create an environment that is friendly to families, businesses, and other stakeholders. A big part of this is completing the upgrades needed for the 109 cultural exchange so that we can utilize the space to its best and fullest potential. We will also be evaluating our work plans and design strategies to make sure they're effectively fulfilling their purpose and see if we have any gaps in programming. We also are looking forward to working with the city to plan and create a community gathering space downtown, and hopefully together move forward on working with MDOT on traffic calming and safety solutions. Goal number four: improve the relationship we have with the city of Celine, or continue to improve it. Step one is presenting this plan to you tonight. And moving forward, we would like to provide monthly updates, improving the communication between Main Street, our downtown stakeholders, and the city. We have common goals, and we look forward to continuing to work with you where our priorities align and how we can be involved in realizing our combined visions. And we will continue to meet with the mayor and city staff on a regular basis. Goal number five: recruit volunteers. We need to recruit more volunteers. Doing this will help make things happen in downtown Celine. To get this going, we'll be fine-tuning our job descriptions for all of the board members and volunteer positions and create a value proposition for our volunteers. Goal number six: lastly, our final goal is to help the community as a whole, as well as individual businesses, innovate. To this end, we will be providing more training to local businesses, including training targeted towards entrepreneurs, succession planning for local businesses, as well as connecting business owners and developers to resources and opportunities that will increase their chance of success in Celine. We believe that completing the action steps and moving in the direction of these goals will cultivate an atmosphere in Celine that fosters the success of small business and is a source of pride for people who live here. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. That was a good presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thorough and succinct, and it was timely, not only because of the city's master plan revisioning process, but also, you might be aware that we're in the midst of a strategic planning process as well, and we'll be having some additional retreats later this fall. And of course, on Thursday, we have our small business event, and I think a number of these issues will be discussed and addressed then. I think your goal of improving the vitality and attractiveness of a downtown in five years is doable. It'll take a lot of work. That's a challenge, and we have some deficiencies, specifically business vacancies in our downtown currently. But I think with collaboration and hard work, those deficiencies can be resolved, and we can improve the viability of our downtown. So look forward to working with you on that. And of course, your colleagues and partners at Celine Main Street. Are there questions for our Main Street Director this evening? No? Easy enough, Mary. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yep. We will be in touch for sure. We come now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of a citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as distributed.
Moved by CEO to approve as distributed. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as distributed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move now to unfinished business item 23-179, ordinance number 857, revised sign code. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Community Development Director Harrington to adopt or not to adopt ordinance number 857, a revised sign code.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gearbaugh simply to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Delorco. Mr. Harrington, would you like to begin, and then I'll entertain some additional remarks from Mr. Gearbaugh, who's the liaison to the Planning Commission?
Aye. Absolutely. So this is the second reading of this ordinance. Again, it's an updated sign code. And per an email and a handout from Mr. Gearbaugh here, I would just like to reiterate that the reason we have to update the sign code, that it's pivotal and crucial that we're updating it, is because what was adopted by the city the last time the sign code came through created contradictory standards within our temporary sign code section. So in an email sent to all of you, I included that section, but it includes excerpts such as signs on or off-site not to exceed six square feet per side. Originally, that had some sort of content basis for when those signs would be allowed. That content was removed. So similarly, standalone signs not to exceed 20 square feet per side is now a standard that we have in our code simultaneously. So we're stuck with different contradictory standards within our sign code, especially when it's an issue of speech, especially when it's a city ordinance, which is a law. We cannot be enforcing things that we do not have our ducks in a row on, that we have good legal basis to stand on, especially with issues related to freedom of speech and expression. It is a very, very legally perilous situation for the city to be in, to be enforcing something that we don't have good grounding on, that our laws are not tight around. So that's the primary reason why we have to update a new sign code. And I think our new temporary sign standards accommodate that. We had lengthy discussions with this at the Planning Commission level. We had three separate meetings. It was brought at Code Review, and then we had questions addressed last week, or two weeks ago as well. So if there's additional questions or comments or concerns, I'm happy to address those. But again, I'd like to reiterate that the reason that we're looking to do this isn't because there's deficiencies that we're correcting. There are. But there's also this larger issue that our current temporary sign code section is not a good section. It's not enforceable. It's not coherent.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Mr. Gearbaugh, if you'd like to comment in your capacity as the representative of the Planning Commission, and I also believe you provided some supplemental material this evening. If you'd like to make reference to that, the chair would welcome it.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Harrington. The big issue was the constitutionality, which we had originally waited even a couple of years ago to amend the sign ordinances because of the issue of content and constitutionality. He is correct in doing that. I think the other issue was we've seen a huge proliferation of temporary signs and vertical signs and a number of different other signs, banners and everything. They're not only distracting, but they potentially could be a safety hazard. From my perspective, this is a separate issue, and it's continued to be a concern of mine, and it has been, is, the vertical banners. And I presented with council a number of the examples that are within our community right now and which continue to be there for the last couple of years as a result. And that's kind of one of the reasons we were looking at changing some of these issues, is trying to avoid this proliferation, which we allow all of our businesses to have signs within the stated measurements and positioning and whatever else. But it's gotten to be where it's starting to look not only as a nice one, as I mentioned, but a safety concern. Other than that, the Planning Commission agreed to most of all these information requests. They looked at things in terms of electronic residential signs, electronic signs that might face a residential area considering certain quasi-properities, like churches or whatever. The recommendation on that was not to allow those because they can be achieved through other types of signage that doesn't involve having to require a video or an electronic-type sign. Similar to that, you can acquire certain advertising like this without a vertical sign. You could do it with a simple, small sign, as he had mentioned, ones that are only six square feet. So the concern on that, whether or not, is something I've been trying to push at, is whether or not we can continue to eliminate the use of vertical banners, which are basically designed to be distracting. They fly in the wind. It's similar to the things that you see, like this flying band with the arms and stuff like that. Those type of things have been eliminated because they are considered distracting. The only reason these signs are designed the way they are is so that they catch your eye when you're driving down the street, which MDOT often eliminates those. That's a concern we've had with MDOT. So in this case, I'm just giving you examples. I'd like to make sure that we've tightened our new sign code, that it does clearly indicate that these type of signs are not permitted, especially the ones, and just recently, this weekend, I saw one that's almost 12 feet tall at one of the farmer's markets, that's been sitting out in front of the recent area in front of Celine Pharmacy, whatever, down there. So that's all I have on this.
Staff, can I make any additional comments?
Yes, absolutely. So of the handout here with the proposed code, just kind of glancing at it, besides the one on the front here, the yellow one, what I believe is the oil chain shop on West Michigan Ave, and then the one affixed to the bottom of the Speedway sign there, they would all not be permitted with the proposed code before you, for either height or area restrictions. So although it's not shown in the second-to-last one with the AT&amp;T banner, Bushes also has a sign on that property. They'd be firmly capped at 32 square feet. When you do the calculations, it's not just height and time limit. We're also limiting the area of each individual sign. We're limiting the total number of signs on a property, which to four, and then the total area of signs to 32 square feet. So if you have a 16-square-foot banner, front and back, you would not be permitted another sign on that property in terms of area. So I just want to reiterate that I understand the concerns about the specific regulation, but I do think that we accomplish that without foraying ourselves into a kind of a tricky definition of what is a vertical banner, or a feather banner, or whatever. I have talked to the city attorney as well, and his recommendation is if we would really like to pursue an outright ban on feather banners, vertical banners, whatever type of banner we want to call it, that we should then pursue postponement so that he can have adequate time to come up with a definition based on what other municipalities have done similarly.
Additional questions or comments from the dais? Mr. Delorco.
My only question is, how much time does he need so we can postpone to a date certain to accomplish that end?
Well, next meeting is scheduled for September 11th, so that's actually three weeks away.
Right. So September 18th would be the following meeting after that as well. So if that would be the preference, to outright ban vertical banners, if we don't believe that's accomplished by the height and the square footage rule, then I would recommend postponement to September 18th, just out of pure assurance that we would be able to do it at that time. But again, there's no guarantee that such an ordinance exists. So the goal would be, like I said, I think that the goal with the regulations was to tailor in such a way that would effectively prohibit vertical banners based on the height factor of it alone.
We would be, in some degree, setting new legal standards if we tried to go that route.
So we're utilizing the services of legal counsel to determine whether or not that's even an option?
Right now, the ordinance you have before you meets the recommendation of staff and legal counsel. If council is adamant that they would like to pursue an outright ban of that particular type of sign, legal will need more time to determine how to do that in a way that reduces our risk.
Well, it sounded like that was staff's recommendation.
No, no, I'm sorry. If that is the council's prerogative, to ban that type of sign.
So let me ask my question in a different way then. Will the current ordinance prohibit the use of what I'm seeing on these pages?
Right. The potential only exception of the middle one here on the bottom on the center page, I don't know how tall that sign is, and the one of Speedway.
Okay.
And the one affixed to Speedway is not a banner. It's just a sign.
But in and of Victory Lane, which is in the extension.
So that may...
Well, that would be in the extension, so we could pull that.
Those two might be legitimate signs, and all the others can...
All the others would be prohibited on the new ordinance. They're not protected by nonconformities because they're temporary in nature.
I'll defer to whatever the council thinks. I just want to get this moving.
Additional questions or comments from the dais? Mr. Gearbaugh?
If we move this forward tonight the way it is, can we continue to focus on that issue?
On the issue specifically of vertical banners? Yes.
Right. Which would be fine with me in terms of doing that, so.
Yeah, I can then bring that up as a definitional issue with it. And it would be a rather easy amendment at a later date to create the new definition and then add it to the prohibition section.
Again, the reason why I'm pushing is, it has become, just in the last three weeks, every single property has put this up. The urgent care has done it. As I mentioned, the farmer's market. Two more went up in front of, or the ones in front of the cannabis shop, and then also the ones that advertise. And I know we can't deal with content, but you know, it's an issue of we require and we allow signage, but we don't need to overproliferate signage, and it's getting to be really a distraction. So, thank you.
Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Yeah, I agree. It's amazing how many signs have popped up. But I'd like to see this ordinance get adopted and then have, not be rushing to get the definition from our attorneys.
And like I said, I think that the height restriction will necessarily eliminate most of these signs. And the whole purpose of the vertical banner really is to capture on the height aspect that you're allowed through it, as opposed to the raw surface area. So eliminating the height of these signs, I think necessarily, excuse me, will eliminate most of them. But like I said, if they make very small ones, which are new to me, I think it's also, to Mr. Gearbaugh, Councilmember Gearbaugh's point, an attractive sign because it does move, because it does draw attention. And that's obviously a safety issue when it comes to traffic.
And our attorneys will confirm whether that the height...
Well, the height aspect is okay. It's really just the definition, do we want to ban vertical banners? Because we're allowed to ban specific types of signs, provided that we're not limiting people's ability to convey their message or speech otherwise. So in this particular instance, I believe there might be a path forward for us, but I am not a legal expert on the matter of allowed or permissible signs.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Harrington, assuming that the subsequent motion passes, can we work with our community partners, including Celine Main Street and the chamber, to get a little fact sheet out to our businesses and property owners? Obviously, our goal has always been and will continue to be compliance, not to try to be punitive or pugilistic with our property owners and businesses. So I'd like to get, you know, some messaging out there to confirm what the new standards are before we have to send code enforcement out to encourage people to remove signs or banners if they're in excess of the new standard.
Right, absolutely. We've also retained emails from everyone that submitted temporary sign permits historically. Specifically, the community groups are another aspect that might be affected by this ordinance, precisely because we're not allowed to make content-based exceptions for community events anymore. So we plan on emailing them the new standards and really letting them know that it's up to them to get the permission of Key Bank or CVS, that lot next to Dairy Queen, to place their signs. Same thing with City Limits Diner, which I know has sometimes become a hub for signs in campaign season. It's really important that you get the permission of the property owner before you place your property on theirs.
Good. I look forward to seeing some of that messaging so that my office and my colleagues can help disseminate that in the coming days and weeks. Are there any additional comments or questions before we vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just clarification. So when this is, is this effective in 10 days or 30 days?
It's 10 days from publishing, which would be the Thursday paper.
So then that will trigger, since these are temporary signs, it'll trigger the calendaring on all of these signs, which means they can be up for 30 days and they have to come down for 60 days.
Right. I imagine there's going to be, it's 30 and 30, but there's going to be some wiggle room for the first initial follow-through with all the property owners to make sure that we're all on the same boat. I imagine, like with the rental inspection program, there's always going to be some pushback to things. So we'll work through it, but I would imagine within 60 days' time, we'll be pretty consistent with these folks.
Short answer to your question is yes. 10 days after next Thursday.
Which could be, just that if we have this write-up fact sheet or whatever, we make sure that we provide it to Sun Times and MLive, all of them, so that we're not...
Absolutely.
...concerned with people saying they didn't wear it forward. Thank you.
If there are no additional questions or comments, we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Delorco to simply acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to adopt or not to adopt ordinance number 857? Moved by Gearbaugh to adopt as revised, and that was seconded by CEO. Is that correct, sir? Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item agenda 23-183, update to council guidelines. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager Otul and to approve or not to approve the revisions to the council guidelines for council communications.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gearbaugh simply to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. City Mayor Otul, do you want to make a brief comment on the proposed changes?
Certainly. So generally speaking, the changes that you see in here are in alignment with the city's existing practices for how we receive and consider external resolutions or things that would otherwise end up on our consent agenda. There are some additional parameters that were based on feedback from council members during some recent consideration of how things were added to the consent agenda. But ultimately, the goal here is just to make it very clear internally and externally to organizations that are seeking to put content on our agenda, how that process plays out.
Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I just noticed where it says you have to have two members of council to put a resolution forward. Is that in compliance, or not compliance, but in alignment with what our current charter says in terms of holding a second meeting, or...
So I mean, that wouldn't meet the definition of like a special meeting standard. The special meeting requirement is a majority of council. The problem is, to add it to the agenda, the reason we have kind of a two as a de facto is we treat it as like a first and a second. If we had a majority voting on it, you risk running afoul of Open Meetings Act because you've got four people who have already effectively decided on an item.
Right, right. No, I understand that. I just was from the perspective, if an individual wants to bring a resolution forward at a meeting, at the end, they can do it during discussion?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if a single person, yes.
I just want to make sure we aren't eliminating that.
Absolutely. Nope. And certainly, you don't even have to wait till the end of the meeting. At any point, when you guys are setting the agenda, any single member can make a motion to try, as we did earlier, amend the agenda to discuss an item that's relevant to them.
To remove something or to add something?
I just want, because of the way it says you should have two, and I just want to make sure we don't run with that.
Yeah, that's really just for how we would handle it if it didn't get processed. if it didn't get processed administratively before a meeting.
In order to get it on.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Kamira Sulek.
As far as the new language citing staff looking it over, is there a certain department that looks it over?
It really, yeah, it really depends on the nature of the content. Usually Clerk Royal gives it a final look to make sure it's in our standard format. But depending on what the topic is, it may be looked at a committee. It may be looked at a specific department, or it may be handled directly by my office.
Okay, and that gives a varying timeline for a response?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any additional comments? There are none. It's been moved by Gierba, seconded by Kamira Sulek, simply to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion to approve or not to approve?
To approve.
Moved by CEO to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Delorko. All those in favor approving say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We move on to new business item 23-184, waste to our treatment plant temporary generator. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from DPW Director Searls and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a 400-kilowatt generator from Central State's Diesel Generators in a not-to-exceed amount of $55,825, and authorize the city treasurer to amend budget line item 590-536-807076.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and authorize.
Moved by Gierba to acknowledge, approve, and authorize. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamira Sulek. Mr. DPW Director Searls, make sure that microphone is on. You can stay seated if you'd like, or you can come to the podium. It's totally your preference.
If this comes on?
No, I don't think so. Should come to the podium. Sorry about that. You can stay at the podium for the subsequent motion as well.
Good evening. Is there any specific questions? Because this one's kind of tricky. We have chosen to buy a generator because in the last emergency, our staff's public works and treatment plant worked together through the emergencies. The existing generator is not healthy. We did look at any other timelines to get a generator. The only way we could get one affordably and quickly is purchasing a used one. We found one that was of low hours, and we expect to get most of that, if not all that money, back in return because, you know, if everything goes in our favor, it will not be running the plant. It's just the backup.
Well, that would be, if I may, pardon my rudeness for interrupting, but that was going to be the one comment or point that I'd like you to message on. Because when the city manager and I were developing the agenda for this meeting, I commented on the price. And while it is a used item, buying new, especially in this environment, I was expecting a dollar amount far in excess of $55,000 plus. So I think that's very exciting as long as you and your colleagues believe that this is a useful piece of equipment that will benefit us in power outages and one where we can get a decent number of years of life out of it before it has to be retired, be retired and replaced.
Exactly. And we'll be able to come with a recommendation on to sell it, repurpose it, keep it for future. It's, again, low hours. It will still be low hours, and it'll still be a high-quality generator when we make that decision. We have a year and a half to go. We looked at rentals, $6,000 to $9,000 a month. So we'll quickly be recapturing our investment back with this versus renting.
Very good. Any questions for the DPW director? Mr. CEO and then Mr. Kamira Sulek.
Yes, Mr. Searls, is this mounted on wheels with a trailer?
We will know if it's going to be mounted on a pad or on stone. It's not going to be on a trailer when we take order, when we take delivery and have it installed at the treatment plant.
Mr. Kamira Sulek?
Yes, a couple of things. What kind of a warranty do we get with it being used? And I know you said it has low hours.
It's used. There's not really a warranty. We, Alex has vetted the equipment. We know we're getting something quality.
Okay, that's fair. And what is the potential for us to keep it and benefit the city in any way when there are power outages?
Well, that would be when we decide, do we want to get it on a trailer? Do we want to maybe replace something that's existing that might be older? And then make that decision based on what the resale and what our desires are with the unit for council.
Okay, and when are we expecting to receive the generator?
I believe as soon as we have action, we're calling. As soon as we have action to go. It's in stock, it's on the ground.
Okay, good, good. The sooner the better.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor then moved by Gierba, seconded by Kamira Sulek to acknowledge, to approve, and to authorize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having, the motion carries unanimously. The last action item of the evening is Agenda Item 23-185, purchase of new water meters. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from DPW Director Searls and to approve or not to approve the purchase of 258 water meters from Corin Maine in a not-to-exceed amount of $74,820, and authorize the city treasurer to amend budget line items, or budget, to amend lines in the budget of 590-536-807094 and 591-536-807091, split equally. I need a motion.
Move to acknowledge and approve and authorize.
Thank you. Moved by Gierba to acknowledge, approve, and authorize. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. CEO. Director Searls, if you care to make a brief comment?
Just briefly, these are the meters that we have, that the volume of meters that we need to make sure when phases one and, or two and three are complete at Bellatoris, plus the residents that still need to convert, we have meters on hand, and it takes into account the additional volume of irrigation meters. We don't want to be left without meters ready for the residents.
Yep. Pretty straightforward. Questions for the DPW director or comments? Mr. CEO.
Originally, we talked about how do we encourage those last few people to convert to the newer water meters? Has there been any action taken in that regard?
There has. I would have to check with Ms. Cole where we're at with that, but people are getting surcharged now. I don't know the numbers.
All right, okay. Don't need numbers. I just wanted to make sure that we were surcharging.
Yep, yes.
Mr. Gierba, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, have we had any failures with the new meters?
We've had one or two that went out just, they were probably programming, but we got them warranted. And then, other than that, it's only been like a programming, like if it's in the wrong units, when it comes to us. It should be programmed to our units. We've had a few that we've had to reprogram.
And just out of curiosity, because we had to, how has the response been in terms of using these meters? Have we had any more concerns with overage or usage or anything like that?
It's gotten pretty, I think our residents are comfortable with the meter now.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Then we have a motion on the floor. It was moved by Gierba, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge, to approve, and authorize. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is reports and other announcements. I'll start to my left and end to my right. Mr. Delorko, do you have any reports or announcements?
Just briefly, the Environmental Commission had a lengthy and substantive discussion around encouraging our community events sponsors and administrators to be aware of the vendor guidelines around our recycling programs. Myself and a number of other people on the Environmental Commission volunteered at the recent Summer Fest event, and it's much to our chagrin that we're still not getting voluntary compliance with prohibition of polystyrene circulated at community events, both in the city and out of the city for community-sponsored sanctioned events. So for our part, what we'd like to do is take a few more steps to engender this cooperation with educational opportunities at the Lions Club and attending the organizers of Celine Summer Fest committee meetings, as well as Celine Main Street, distributing the fact sheet, make sure that everyone understands what these vendor guidelines are. As a number of people are telling us, they were not aware that such vendor guidelines existed. So we'll do everything we can to encourage our vendors to cooperate with what we think is an important aspect of environmental stewardship. The next step would be to recommend to council that we draft some form of policy that would be taken into consideration at our community events application stage, perhaps an amendment that would expressly prohibit the use of some of these materials.
Very good. Please keep us abreast of the progress you make on that issue. I appreciate the update. Mr. Gierba, any reports or announcements?
Just a couple of planning this week. We'll be discussing the rezoning of Island that just came in, as the railroad from agricultural to office service. And then also, this will be the, one of the last opportunities to talk about the master plan. We were planning, we'll be discussing it and adopting it correctly.
Yeah, so it's unfortunately slightly more convoluted. So planning, we'll be discussing it to begin with. They're making a recommendation to council whether to release it as a draft. So I sent this all to you in the email last Friday. So what you'll be voting on and what they'll be voting on is essentially to open up this 60-day public commenting period, and it's primarily designed by the state for other municipalities, the utility, the railroad, and everybody else to be able to comment on this plan. That said, the public is also still able to comment on it. It's just a formal draft that we're putting out. So we're not marrying ourselves to the text of the plan. It is the beginning of the home stretch. And then throughout September and October, we'll be bringing specific sections of the text to the Planning Commission for slightly more granular, in-depth discussion. But they should be relatively, should hopefully be smoother sailing from here on out. The bulk of the work is done. The draft of the plan is out. And I think it reflects a lot of the public comment and feedback that we got throughout the process.
And then also, just to follow up, a charter review committee met last week, and basically it was our last meeting. City Manager O'Toole will be coming forward with recommendations that we've come about and discussed in the next meeting. Some of them, if we want to do some of the amendments, we'll have to take action fairly quickly because of the potential of the election schedules and how those are going to occur.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to provide an update on where we are with that. So the Charter Review Committee has assembled a list of recommended amendments. We had City Attorney Chubb present for at least two of those sessions. So he helped us to formulate, you know, what's a priority, what could be kind of managed effectively other ways. And subsequent to that, we've identified a specific schedule that would be recommended. The first schedule does include making amendments or including charter amendments on the March election, or, well, shoot, it's, yeah, February election, right? Yeah, February 27th, because it just changed. So the timeline was a bit accelerated. We thought we had a couple extra weeks with the primaries being moved up. So that will mean that we will have to do the final report as well as ask council to consider the language for those first amendments likely at the same meeting. But as soon as that report is complete, I do plan to include it in one of my Friday communications so you have it advanced since we have three weeks between now and our next meeting.
Very good.
Fortunately for us, we can do two things. One's disclaimer, there's a number of our parts in our charter, whatever can be considered just a disclaimer as a result of state law, overruling those or that are no longer part. The other ones are actual amendments that we'll be making, as City Manager O'Toole said. And so hopefully, that'll help us get ourselves backed up to speed. And then lastly, I just want to thank the community for showing up at the yard sale out at the Celine Farm, and the Renshler Farm, I mean. We had almost, we had over 2,000 visitors. And we're like Summer Fest, I think there was a lot of things going on. The rain hit, but it didn't seem to do too much damage. So thanks again, and I think it was a very successful event.
Very good. I've got two, and I don't need an answer this evening, DPW Director Searls, but if council and the community could get something in the next 48 hours, that would be terrific. I noticed yesterday that the one street in Maplewood Farms is still closed because of the pump station repair at, at, on North Maple Road. And I was hoping that was going to be complete and reopened late last week. So can you keep us abreast to that? And when we can expect to see that work conclude and the street reopen? Because that is of interest, obviously, to the people in that, that subdivision. And then second, just a reminder that this Thursday, beginning at 7:30 a.m. here in council chambers, is our annual Small Business Summit. So if you own a small business in the Celine community, or you're interested in starting a enterprise in our community, we strongly encourage you to attend. Mary from Celine Main Street has helped to coordinate an, an excellent program and presentation, which I think will be relevant and timely. The only requirement is that you are SVP. So please reach out to Sarah Massey, our PR generalist, if you are interested in attending. And again, that's this coming Thursday at 7:30 a.m., and we'll conclude around nine o'clock. Mr. CO, any reports and announcements? I know you wanted to give a cemetery update, and we'll do that after we conclude reports and announcements.
Very good. We had a meeting this morning of the senior citizens' boards, and the only real new information to come out of that meeting was the fact that they're anticipating raising the price for Meals on Wheels. They've been charging $250 for the meal that's provided, I think since 1983, and the costs have gone up significantly over time. So they're now contemplating raising that price to $3, nominal 50 cent increase, which hopefully will not put anybody out of the business of wanting to subscribe to Meals on Wheels. I think there's only about, she mentioned, I think, 25 to 40 people. It varies over time as people come and go from the program. So it's not a significant impact, but it is something that needs to be done to, to be able to continue the program. And that's about all.
Very good. Mr. Kamira Sulek, any reports or announcements?
Yes, I have two. For the DEI committee, working on developing plans for next year's activities and events. And then the arts and culture, we went over the Jazz in the Park, mostly, you know, of the, all the interest by musicians and other vendors for there to be a next year's event. And so I think it's pretty clear that there will be an annual Jazz in the Park event. We were able to collect all the donated committed funds, which was in excess of 6,000. And it, we had so much positive response, and I don't think there, I don't think anybody's going to argue that we should have it every year. And that's all. The Celine Youth Council will be meeting in September when school starts. Thank you.
One last thing, because Councilmember Rice was absent, I, I was included on an email string from the Parks Commission that they received a significant number of nominations for the annual Green Thumb Awards, and I expect that those awards will be determined, and certificates, and a little gift will be provided to the winners likely at one of our September meetings, October at the very latest. Mr. CO, you wanted to give an update on Oakwood Cemetery?
I did, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to make council aware of the fact that it's the intent of the Cemetery Board to instruct the DPW to remove some trees at the top of the hill up there by the podium for, they're going to remove a line of crabapple trees, I think along the north side of that area, and then a large pine tree, which is already in the process of dying anyway. And this is to facilitate the, the clearing of an area to generate another 40 to 42 grave sites up there that we now do not have the space for.
Appreciate that, very good. One thing, and it's not imminent, but we might want to consider because of the loss of shade at or around Memorial Day next year, is some sort of canopy or cover for the participants of our, our ceremony at Oakwood Cemetery. That, that, I think that would be appreciated. So just something to consider for 2023, oh, 2024, excuse me. If there's no additional reports or announcements, we come now to the second public comment period under the Open Meetings Act. Any person, excuse me, may come forward at this time, may comment or question the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
My name is Kristen Bichel. I'm a resident on Hawthorne Way and city council candidate this November. No respect to our excellent city staff. I hear so much confidence, and I have questions when it comes to this ordinance. I've heard some signs described as distracting, for example, and I haven't heard what data there is that makes them distracting. So does the city have information that, from traffic studies, that, that like a feather banner caused additional traffic accidents in the area? How many cities in Michigan either ban or allow these feather signs? We heard a presentation by our Director of Celine Main Street, and we talked about needing some businesses. And I, I have a concern against weighing the need to, the understandable need to, to regulate with what help do our businesses need? So I, I'm not taking a, a position, but I'm interested if city staff or council members have discussed the signed ordinance or these feather flags with business owners, with farmers' market vendors, with the Chamber of Commerce, or Celine Main Street. I don't need the answers to these questions. Right now, I hope they're food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional citizen comments?
I'm sorry for the humidity. Anyway, the Main Street Strategy Plan, I enjoyed. But I noticed that the speed in front of the old Ford plant is 45 miles an hour. And you come through town, and I think it's, goes down to 35. That means you've got an extra five. And I think the state has the, what, 85 percentile? If 85% are going 65 miles an hour, maybe we ought to raise it? There was a lot of communication on Facebook regarding downtown businesses, and I think maybe, I don't know how many accidents have occurred, since they've increased. The state has increased the speed on US 12. But it is an important thing, because you don't have time to see or to park or anything else when you're going that fast. And I think that with the accident criteria or whatever, and then it does get narrower by the Legion, and that's pretty heavy speed, too. And I don't know if the council could address or would be interested in addressing the speed going through the business district compared to other villages or cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Any additional citizen comments?
Good afternoon, my name's Libby Williams. I'm here to express my concern for the Celine Police Department's new initiative entitled Volunteers in Public Safety, or VIPs. It's a little troubling to me. I understand the qualifications would require training and background checks. However, I'm not comfortable with members of the community acting in police sanctioned positions of authority. I feel it's irresponsible to allow non-officers this level of authority. If a seemingly random person came up to me asserting authority over my actions, demanding I listen to them, I would not be inclined to do so. I think it's a slippery slope to vigilantism and will be used to escalate personal grievances, possibly. If any of you have ever been on the Next Door app, you will understand what I mean. If the Celine Police need more support, I think it's important that the city provide it for them properly by allocating more funds to hire and recruit more properly trained officers for these duties. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Any additional citizen comments?
Good evening. Chang Ming Fan, local social entrepreneur. I'd like to, first, I'd like to echo Mr. Dean's comments about successful fundraising event for the garage sale. There's another one, also I'd like big shout out, which is organized and supported by Celine Social Services. And the store owner at that time, a legendary woman, Mary Greifitt, and her husband George. The event is very successful, raised a lot of money. The money will go to the Celine Social Services. And of course, each year, Mary and George, they contribute quite a lot, although they live in an suburb, but they support Celine and a lot of stuff. And this is one thing I like, so I like to say not only is a fundraising event, it is a social event we should really pay attention and should really recognize that, how important it is the local government, organizers, volunteers, and school, and business owners, not just want to make Celine a good place to live, but also demonstrate that how wonderful environment we created by through this work together. And this is one thing I think that is really important, to see that there are a lot of people have some negative feelings about Celine, but I feel just the other way, and you stay getting better. And this is one thing I like to say that we should really recognize, this legendary woman, Mary Greifitt, and her contribution. By the way, Ms. Mayor, probably you can remember that 2018, the, you gave the certificate of the outstanding citizens in Washington County, that's her. And second thing is about the small business, I think that we should also know that the online security issue. I attend the Detroit yearly business online security training summit. Do I have 30 seconds?
36.
36. So I'd like to know that if we can take advantages, this program, federal government, they call it agency, it's a CISA, have prepaid money. If whoever want to participate, they can just register that, which is really important to protect our citizens, small business, schools, and I can give you the contact. And that meeting was very, very successful at the tallest building in Detroit, as you know, that Mira Hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional citizen comments this evening? Clerk Royal, did we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time? Very good. Well, we thank everybody for their, their thoughts this evening. City Manager O'Toole, I would make one request of, of your office for the next meeting, which is September 11th. I believe we're going to have a special presentation, the swearing-in of two new officers and our new deputy police chief. As such, I know that Chief Radzick will be in attendance for that meeting. I think that would be a good opportunity for her and her department to clear up some misconceptions about the VIPS program, which is not new. It was actually launched in 2018 under the leadership of then-police chief Hart. But I, I was shared some, some screenshots this, this weekend from social media, and there are some, I think legitimate questions about the program. And I think providing an opportunity in public to dispel some myths and, and address some of those concerns would be, would be productive and beneficial to the community. So if you could make note of that and talk to the chief, that would be greatly appreciated. Please note our upcoming meetings, and if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion before we adjourn to excuse the absence of our council colleague, Mayor Protam Dillon.
So moved?
Moved by Kamira Sulek, seconded by Councilmember Gierba to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries, carries unanimously. And now, how about a motion to adjourn our regular meeting at 7:54 p.m.?
Move to adjourn?
Moved by Del Orco, was that a second by CO or Kamira Sulek? Kamira Sulek, okay. Thank you, sir. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
And we're adjourned.